There you are. I know you know.
To say when they look at it.
Because we don't have enough filler.
What filler?
Filler, to get to 7:15.
Oh, that's right, okay. Well, ask John to talk about something.
I'd like to call the meeting of May the 6th of the Planning Board of the Town of Newbury to order. It's 7:02 or 7:03. My name is John Weiss. To my left is...
George Morse.
Richard Moss.
John O'Connell.
Elizabeth Mitchell.
Martha Taylor.
So we have on our agenda tonight two public hearings. One at 7:15 at time certain to reopen the meeting that we had with, for the Triton Regional School District for their track and field. And at 8 o'clock, we have a special permit application for a home-based animal boarding kennel with Lisa Porter. So we have a couple of issues that we will go over before that, but we will start that, the public hearing restarted at 7:15. So to start on the liaison reports with the Board of Selectmen, Martha, do you have anything?
The biggest thing really is that they reviewed the warrant article by article and signed it. The warrant has been posted on the website, both for the special town meeting and the regular town meeting. And that was probably the most significant thing. And the question and answer forum tomorrow night on the ballot questions will be here at 7:00. So we encourage everybody to attend or send questions. And it will be televised.
It will be televised, good. Okay. And just out of curi-- because I wasn't there on Monday night. I know a few of you were at the municipal...
Yes.
So how did, just out of curiosity, were the results of that, or is it positive results?
Well, we had, we had a number of residents and questions about, you know, funding and cost of design and so on and so forth, so.
Okay, so kind of typical.
Yeah, and I think some of those will come up again tomorrow night at the Q and A session.
Okay, thank you. Well, MVPC, there's really no, we have not met since we met last because we had just met, you know, the week prior to the 22nd. And I think I reported out then that the major issue that we had talked about as a board was the conflict of the population data that we saw.
Yes.
That was almost 45% off between the projections that MVPC was making for the transportation modeling, as well as for the economic development strategy. So they are in contact with the Donahue Institute, which is the group in the Globe, that was quoted in the Globe. They're from UMass Amherst, and they are going back and revisiting their numbers. As we move forward with our master plan update, which we will begin sometime this summer, that will be an integral part of, I think, what we'll be looking at. So that's about all I have to report on MVPC. George?
Yeah, Zoning Board of Appeals, excuse me.
Oh, we have not met here since the last meeting of the Planning Board. We did meet on the site, and the issues with the neighbor were pretty well resolved. Jim Cunningham said, "Why don't we do this?" And so we scrambled around for about 45 minutes and said, "Yeah, let's do this." And the problem kind of went away. Instead of pitching it all to one side, we're going to pitch it this way.
That was for the rail trail?
That's the rail trail, yeah. So it's a major improvement. It's not going to be a great deal different than it is right now.
Which, oh, the portion of the rail trail which is...
That comes out on Park Street.
Where the Western Division meets Park Street. Actually, it's not the Western Division. The meeting for Klein meets Park Street.
And just out of curiosity, we had that site walk with Bill Francesca, DeFrancesco.
DeFrancesco, yeah.
Did the ConCon, did they need to take any action, or was that just a FYI kind of walk that we made with them?
I don't think so. I think there were several sort of informal agreements made that, "Before you do this, talk to us. Or if you do anything, want to do something different, talk to us." But it's basically approved.
Good.
They've started clearing the site.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, 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 they've done major clear.
Just out of curiosity, any progress to report on the property to the north of it?
There's masonry up.
Is there, is it all up?
It's, I don't know if it's all up. Yeah, it's not all up.
There's been some real progress.
Has there progress?
Yeah, there's brick, it's all brick.
Excellent.
Yeah.
This is excellent. Well, that's good to hear. George?
Zoning Board of Appeals, no activity. There is a meeting scheduled on June 11th to cover a new application.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're not at 7:15, so we're going to skip down to item, ongoing business, the master plan. We have a number of things to talk about. Maybe, Martha, if you could just give us a general update on the status of all the things that you've been working on, and what's out there, and how, what we've gotten back, et cetera.
Okay. We, the RFP is officially issued now. I have put a notice in the Daily News, which should appear tomorrow. There should have been a notice in the Boston Globe today. I placed it on the Mass Planners List Serve yesterday, and within about two minutes got a request for a copy of the RFP. So I've actually, I think, gotten about seven requests so far. And I've also sent copies out to people that we, firms that we had identified before that, that we might want to have, take a look at.
Is it gone to the central register?
It doesn't need to, because it's under, no.
Would that not be a good idea?
It's under, it's under 100,000.
I'm sorry?
It's under 100,000, so we don't need to go through that process. And I think the Mass Planners List Serve hits a good segment of the planners in the area who are kind of familiar with us. I am also getting it on the American Planning Association website.
Oh, good.
So.
That should be plenty.
Yeah, if we can get, I mean, if we have seven as of today, and if we can get 10 people who've requested it, we are, we indicated in the notes to, I sent out notices to both the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, and the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen, indicating a schedule that we were looking at, and for them to have someone be part of a review team that would, that we would be composing. So with that in mind, what I wanted to do is have a conversation with, with the Board about what you all think should be the review team, assuming that we're going to have a planning committee that will be 15 or so members. That, that, the thought was that we don't need all 15 to review the proposals as they come in, but a subgroup of that. And so we thought we'd have someone from the Board of Selectmen, Capital Planning, and FinCom, as well as a neighborhood resident, and two to three members from us. And so the question is, I'll open it up for discussion about, who do you all think should represent us in the review of the master plan?
Who should represent the Board?
Yeah.
Certainly you should, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you.
I would think Martha, as the town planner, ought to represent also. And I've volunteered to do it, but that's up to you, whether you want to pick me or not.
I'd support his volunteerism. Do you want to support George's volunteerism to be on the review?
I think it would be better if we had somebody like under 76. Somebody that has a fighting chance of living through.
Okay, you don't want to volunteer then, John.
You can't be.
I'm serious about that. We've got four septuagenarians on the Board, and that is quite enough old guys.
But we're talking, right now, we're just talking about evaluating the proposals.
Yeah, I know that. But even so, it's part, the process starts when you're looking at the proposals. I'd be happy to do it.
We only have an option of then having Elizabeth, and I think Elizabeth is going to demur.
Elizabeth is tied up.
No, I'd be happy to have a look just at the proposals part, but...
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Or do you want to?
Who else are we talking, we need more?
George.
George volunteered.
George volunteered.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, I'm happy with that.
Even things out?
I'm happy with that. I'm happy with that. So we are waiting to hear, we've got memos out, we've got, right, did we get something out to the Triton or not? Did we do that? Do we, I don't know, anyway. So we're looking for five to six members of the community to join us in this process. And so we'll see what happens.
And we have put flyers up requesting interest from residents to join the Master Plan Committee. And I've also sent a press release over to Jen Solis to put in the Daily News. So for anybody who is watching on TV, if you are interested in joining the Master Plan Committee, please let me know. Contact me at the Planning Board office.
And so the schedule is, we will have a pre, I guess, bid conference here on May the 27th that Martha and I will conduct. And then the, the proposals are due on June the 15th, and that we would review them as soon thereafter, and that we would hope to have a contract and ready to go by probably the middle of July. So that would be ideal in terms of the timeframe and ensuring that we have enough people to participate in the process. Anything else that we want to indicate on the master plan, Martha?
Well, the only thing we had talked about was possibly having a student on the Citizen Committee, and that's why Triton would come into play.
We have not specifically done that, so I think we should do that. Okay. To, to all, to all Newbury residents. So somebody, do you mind if I ask you specifically, how would we specifically try to find a high school student? Okay. Yeah, we think that's a good idea. Okay.
Probably a senior, and especially for public service, which is good for them.
Yeah.
Lot of kids out there that would jump right at that. There's a really good sense of volunteerism at Triton.
Well, you've done that with your, with the environmental stuff.
We've had a lot, a lot of luck with Triton students.
Okay, I've got about a minute and a half. Can we start the meeting before, before 7:15?
No.
No?
Start after, but not before.
So let's talk about preparation for town meeting then. The issues that we're bringing forward are the zoning issues, and what else? I don't think that we need a, we've had presentations the last two years. I don't think, know that we need a presentation this time.
Yeah, I don't think we do. I think, I think all that we really need is a report, a Planning Board report saying that we held public hearings on such and such a date the Planning Board recommends, and then be available for questions if any come up. I think the moderator will need to know who, you know, who to point to, which I assume would be you.
Right. And so for those of you who are in the audience, these are changes that we are making to the, what do you call it, the apartment?
Accessory apartments.
Accessory apartments, which were, was instigated by our building commissioner and by the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've had meetings with them, and we've made adjustments to the, to the bylaw. We're bringing that forward, along with a few other definitional things, one or two which had to do with Plum Island. What would you call them?
Definitely.
The ceiling, the ceiling heights.
The suspended basement.
Suspended basements.
Gross floor area.
So, so we'll be doing that. So I think that's okay. And you'll prepare that? Well, town meeting is the 20th?
19th.
19th. So we have to have that in by what date?
I think we don't really need to submit anything formal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I think, you know, just an, just an oral presentation.
Okay. All right. So now, we'd like to reopen the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman? Because I'm a butter to the Triton High School area, I'm going to be recusing myself from any discussions or voting, or anything in the process that involves Triton High School.
Okay. Thank you very much, Richard. So...
I think you should step, step down from the table.
Is there any reading that's necessary?
I don't know that there is. Is there any, no, there's no reading. So where we left this was that we accepted your application. There were a number of questions that were raised by our consultant relative to the stormwater, relative to a number of other issues. We've gotten that report back. I guess you've had meetings with them as well and others. You know, it might be helpful for you to maybe, may I want to sit up here, Brian? And just...
Chris wants to come up too.
Chris wants to come up too?
Actually, Peter Spanos is here, representing.
Okay, just, just, just go to the mic?
Yeah, I think so.
That would be easier.
Fine. That's good. So perhaps it'd be helpful if you could give us your thoughts on our consultant's report and Triton's response to those issues.
So we have, well, we can, Peter can certainly be more technical than I can, but to date, we submitted the application. A third-party reviewer submitted a report. We then provided, we, Triton through Gale Associates, provided a response. And in my understanding, at least my limited technical knowledge here, the response that we got from the third-party reviewer on behalf of the town, basically went through point by point and said that it had been addressed. We met with a kind of a joint group of Conservation Commission and Planning Board from Newbury, as well as Chris Walsh, myself. Peter was not involved, but Ashana Stella from, from Gale Associates. I feel like it was someone else. And from my understanding at this point, I believe the Conservation Commission was looking to the Planning Board, the Planning Board was looking to the Conservation Commission. And it was a matter of, once the third-party reviewer was satisfied, that that was the next step, and that was kind of the last remaining technical hurdle, if you will.
Thanks, John. When do you guys take this up at the ConCon?
Well, we meet on the, I think it's the 13th. We can't meet on the...
It is the 13th.
It's the 13th, yeah. And I would expect that we would vote that night. I don't know for sure that it's on the agenda, but I would expect it would be. The general sense of the ConCon was we're good. I'm not totally convinced by everything I heard, but I'm sure, as I said at the ConCon meeting, there's several people involved that know a great deal more about it than I do. And I do know this for sure, it is way better than what it is now. And, you know, perfect is the enemy of good. I'm not, and if there is an issue, we can depend on DEP to point that out, point out the errors of our ways. So, no, I think we're good with it. It's a, it's a good plan, and, you know. I, I have no experience with athletic fields and how they are dealt with. And the things that I'm seeing missing are virtually impossible to accomplish without an enormous expenditure which involved a redesign, a redo of the whole thing, which to me makes no sense at all. So.
Okay, we have, I'd like to get any, any preliminary comments from any of the Board members before we proceed and take comments from the public. I think that we have a number of letters that we received from butters.
We do.
And I don't know that we have time to read them all, but maybe, maybe I could read one or two.
Maybe we could see if the people are here that wrote them.
That would be a good point.
And we don't have to write them, read the letter.
Let's just see which, which ones they are. Thank you. Thanks. No, I just, did I give you two?
Yeah.
You can get a copy of these as well, even though they're to us.
There's, there's more coming, sorry.
So once I get these, I will ask, as John suggests, if anyone is here who, who had written the letter. Well, do you know if you are? Anyone here who wrote, wrote in to us? No?
Jim Moran, Alexa Strock.
You've got a couple more.
We have a spare.
Yeah.
This is... Painted horse.
Yeah.
Do you all have this one?
Okay. I think I got one more here for you.
Thanks. Excuse us for this, but we just received these. Had we had them earlier, we would have had them in a packet, and we would have been able to read them. But we got, now I know we got one around 2:00, and then the rest have just come in. And so we haven't had time to read them. So I think maybe what I'd rather do than get into these then is ask anyone who would like to make a statement about the Triton Fields and the project that's before us, to come to the microphone, let us know your name and address, and let us know your concerns if you'd like to speak.
Quick question beforehand, since this is information from me as well. Would you mind identifying the gentleman who was talking and other individuals who have bested interest in this project?
I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Triton. Thank you. And so I definitely would say I have the best interest.
Okay.
Yes. I don't have a future in school, so I... Yeah, and Peter Spanos is from Gale Associates, the architects and engineers for the project. And Chris Walsh is also here, the facilities director for Triton. Thank you.
Okay.
And just anybody who wants to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself and give your address, please.
Okay.
My name is Colin Moss, and I am Bridget's wife. So I should, but he has recused himself. We live at 118 Caldwell Farm. And first, I want to state that I am definitely in favor of a new stadium for the school. I, they desperately need it. And I just felt it was important to make sure that everybody in the area, both at Caldwell Farm and some of the neighbors, were aware that the hearing was tonight. I would say that there are some people at Caldwell Farm, I don't even think they're bothered by it because they live in a certain location where it's not as noisy. I would say for the most part at Caldwell Farm, there's one strip of houses that run along the marsh, that those people are, are more bothered by it. And, you know, everybody seemed, you know, they're, they're fine with the students on the field, and it's more the speakers, the loudspeaker, the, the band, maybe the drums. And I think the concern, at least my concern is, it's, it has been three months a year, and generally two to four nights a week. And it's, you know, even if it bothered you a little, and it was like it wasn't going to be every night. And I think the concern is that there's been talk of renting this out, and, and there's no operations and maintenance manual. So we really don't know what this rental situation is. And, you know, the acoustics are going to be changed, but we really don't know what they are. And what I would say is, you know, if we could get an operations and maintenance manual that outlines what the new stadium will mean for us as residents, and also if we could have an acoustic, some type of acoustic testing, because I mean, it, it may be we're more concerned than we need to be. You know, and I, I just want to say I definitely want to work with the school. We want this to be pleasant for everybody, and we want it to be a win-win situation. And, you know, definitely I feel the school needs their, their stadium. And, does anybody else want to?
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
I'm Marlene Coslow, 36 Caldwell Farm Road. I live on the entire opposite end of where the rest of the Caldwell Farm people live. And I do hear the band in particular. It, most of the time does not bother me, or my husband. However, my concern really is that if this facility is going to be rented, I would like to know what sort of events will be held, what time they will be held, if there will be any kind of limit to the time. I understand there are Massachusetts laws and so forth. However, not every event can easily be controlled. I'd like to know who will enforce the rules, and how that will be carried through. The noise level is impossible to tell at this point. However, it, it's a major concern for us, because hearing the band is one thing, but if we're going to have hard rock at 1:00 in the morning, but we don't know that. You're, you're shaking your head, but we haven't been informed as to what sort of ideas. If we had parameters, you're going to ask us for a lot of money in our taxes. This is a great concern to all of my neighbors, I am sure. Some of them are here, but the others will not be happy with their tax bills if we aren't given the courtesy of knowing exactly what the town will be voted, voting for or against, and how much it will cost us. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on the Triton expansion? It's not expansion, replacement.
Replacement.
Redevelop.
Upgrade.
Ed Dearden, 120 Elm Street. Triton is basically in my backyard, and I believe that of all the people, I would be the most directly affected. Typical school functions is no problem. Matter of fact, Saturday afternoons, I can hear the band, and the kids are there, and I like that. What concerns me is the, the proposed uses of this stadium now. I don't believe that that was ever in the cards when they first put the school there. This is a residential neighborhood. I'm concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about the parking. How many people are they going to allow over there? And where are they going to park them? It, it seems to me that that's a change in the use of the school, and I'm not sure that it's a good change. I understand that it's, it's to raise money, but there are other ways of raising money. You don't need a rock concert. But I just thought I wanted to express my concerns and my unhappiness about it.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed. Thanks, Ed.
Hello. My name is Robert Gregory. I live at 84 Caldwell Farm. The back of my property is addressing the stadium. Yeah, I do hear the noise. I do hear the band, but it's really not that bad. I'm hearing the word rentals. Can you explain that? Would you?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you finish all of your questions?
That's just about it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Because I've been waiting for everyone to speak, and then Brian will respond.
Okay. And I want to ask a question about zoning.
Mm-hmm.
That's District 2, is it not?
I'm not.
It's Residential Agricultural District.
Yes.
Yeah.
And schools are allowed.
Yes.
Right.
Public schools are allowed.
Exempt from zoning.
Yes.
Yep.
Nonprofit schools are allowed.
Right.
Right.
That's what the zoning says.
Right.
Now, we're talking about rental. Talking about money. Do they need a variance? Special permit?
I don't know. I don't know that. Do you know?
No. Not off the top of my head.
No, I don't know.
As long as the money is used for the nonprofit purposes, it should be okay.
Right. My instinct would be that as long as money is being used for the nonprofit function, that it would be okay, but we don't directly know that, and we can check on that.
Okay, I'd like to hear what the rentals are.
All right. So, would anyone else like to comment on this, from these kinds of perspectives, neighbors? You're on.
So, let me first clarify the use of the rental funds. I know this was, the big question is both what are the rental types and where is that revenue going to go? This project initially started as a private donation effort through the Triton Education Foundation. The assumption was we were not going to go to the towns. In that time, that began in 2011, in that time, they had a lot of folks doing a lot of hard work, and 2.3, at that point, $2.9 million is a lot of money to raise privately. Since that time, the stadium project has changed. A lot of it has to do with zoning. We can't replace the bleachers without doing restrooms, so that, then the amenities building came, became part of the project. So, it has grown, but in the process of doing that, when we came to the towns, and we've been meeting with the, I don't think it's an official committee, but it's the District Communications Committee, so it's generally representatives from the school committee, the superintendent, myself, generally a member of the selectmen from each town, and a member of the finance committee from each town. We meet several times a year, we've been talking about this for a few years now. The question was, we rent our facilities now to outside groups. The money goes into a revolving account, and that money is expended on the buildings themselves. The request was, if we are, if we have this facility, is it a rental opportunity? And it is, I can confirm that for you. And then the request was, if there's a rental opportunity, can that money be used to offset the cost? So, the theory, as we have now with the selectmen and the finance committees have agreed, is to use the first $40,000 of any amount of money that's generated and put that into a stabilization account, so that every, about every seven years, the track needs to be replaced, resurfaced. In about every 12 to 14 years, the carpet of the field needs to be replaced. So, the theory is if we can put $35,000, $35,000 to $40,000 away per year into a stabilization account that the committee has control over, it'll be full under oversight with the Board of Selectmen reviewed every year in the budget process, that we would have those capital expenditures. Everything else in the stadium, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, is concrete, aluminum, pavement, and steel. So, everything else that is going to, you know, that's going to break down over time, the capital funds would be there to replace it, so that this initial investment from the towns would be there in 25 years, and would not, we would not end up with the situation we have now. You know, the bleachers have been condemned, we actually had to have them removed, they're now gone. So, that's how the money would be spent. As far as the types of rentals, I can certify to you here today that I have never heard the topic of a band, or a rock band, a concert, occurring in that space. I can't say that there would never be that opportunity in the future, but that has never been the intention. From the very early onset, the interest in the space is the fact that it is a synthetic turf field that is regulation size for soccer, for field hockey, for lacrosse, and for football. So, all of the interest is not for special events, but it's for groups like Eastern Bay Lacrosse and Seacoast United Club Soccer that want the time and the field time. So, to date, there has never been a discussion about that being used for anything other than primarily, first and foremost, it will be for the youth of the Triton communities. It will be for our middle school and high school athletes to have competition. It means that we can have, because it's a synthetic field, we could have consecutive games, we don't have to rest it, it gives more students, student athletes opportunity to play during the day, under the lights. So, the only, the two concerns about sound, it's primarily for athletic competition. The second piece about the drums, I've heard that, and that's a reality, in talking to several people who live even on the opposite side of the field, the reality is sound carries, and drums, I'm a drummer, I can tell you, sound carries. But we did review the concept of an acoustical analysis. I think we probably could come up with some data, we could come up with some remedies. And in talking to Shaun Boyd earlier today, and over the course of the last week, we would spend perhaps significant money on the analysis, we would likely incur significant costs that we would have to pass on to the towns to remedy the sound, and at the end of the day, you really can't remedy sound. The reality is, it's, someone, a corps of drummers playing on the field is going to echo off the buildings across the marsh around the neighborhood. I mean, we can't deny that. So, what we've, in speaking with Gail, really the only solution is to put time restrictions, is to say, as it is now, I don't believe we ever, we have kind of an informal curfew of 9:00 PM. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's rare, if ever, an event after 9:00 PM at night, and generally that would be a Friday night football game. The hope would be to have more games under the lights, but again, that would be the same type of event where it's an evening, early evening meeting, and it's done, you know, in the, well before 9:00. There was a comment, someone, I forget who made the comment, sorry, about, that it's generally restricted to three or four months of the year, so basically the spring and the fall. Our hope would be that it would be used in the summertime. Those groups that want to come in and hold lacrosse camps and soccer camps, that would all be, my guess would be daytime usage. So, the hope is that the more people want to use it, and again, I can tell you, Chris Walsh as the facilities manager is, he's the Type A personality that's responsible for all the facilities. I would be really hard pressed to hold a major rock concert in a brand-new stadium and assume that it's going to look like it did at the end, when they began. So, I mean, I can tell you that as far as the committee's discussions, the administration's discussions, the athletic director and everyone else, this is, this stadium is primarily for the student athletes of the Triton District. Secondarily to that, it would be to support our Triton youth, Triton youth everything, Triton youth lacrosse and soccer, Triton youth football. And then beyond that, it would be renting out to athletic clubs. And again, the primary interests, the primary interest that we've heard in this area, football, yes, tend to be more football fields, but it's the regulation size lacrosse and soccer that is most in demand. We would certainly be willing to entertain the discussions if there were, I'm not going to pretend to know anything about the zoning in the area, but our intention is 110% to be good neighbors. At this point, and we talked to the arts director today, I don't see any change as far as the drums. I don't see any change. We would love it if we could attract, I'm going to forget the name of the organization, but the band competition, the marching band competition that's held annually. If we could attract that once every few years, we'd be thrilled. That would be an all-day event. But by and large, it's going to be a few practices a week with the marching band in the fall, an evening Friday night games. So, I don't know if that answered all the questions.
I think that goes a long way. You wanted to make a comment?
Yes, thank you.
No, no, you need to come up here, Robert, because they can't, it's all televised and recorded.
Based on what you're just saying, there wouldn't be any objection to written restrictions on its uses?
Uh, no.
One other thing, the income that you would receive, is that taxable income?
Yeah. It is not taxable, so, I'm sorry, I need to use the microphone. It is not taxable. We actually, the bonds that we have quoted through our bond advisor isn't working with the towns. We have to get a mixed taxable and non-taxable bond, because we would be renting to entities that may be for-profit, so we can't charge tax, but because they're a for-profit entity, we can't get that pure tax-free bond rate, which is below 1%. Does that make sense?
Uh, no. Is it taxable to anything other than the school, the income that you would receive?
It is not, because it's a revenue, and a non-
That's what I pay taxes on, right?
Right, but as a, we're not, we're tax-exempt, as a public entity.
Yeah, if you weren't a school, and that was just an area to be rented, is that taxable income?
If we weren't a school?
If you weren't a school, yeah.
My expertise is being a school.
It would be a profit, yeah.
But my guess is yes, if that were, if we were a public entity, then that would absolutely be taxable income.
Be a profit?
It'd be a profit.
Nonprofit in that district on schools?
Right.
Yep. So, again, the money, any money raised, actually, the first part I said was the goal is to have the first $40,000 put into a stabilization account. Again, as you mentioned, as a public entity, that's going back into the public facilities. Any amount above that $40,000, the agreement that we have to date with the towns is that we would use that to decrease the assessment to the towns each year. So, we would look at the previous year's revenues, if we brought in more than 40, if we brought in $100,000, $40,000 would be put aside for the long-term maintenance, capital maintenance, $60,000 would go towards decreasing the debt payment for that following year to assess to the towns.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from?
I'm sorry, I make one more clarification.
Sure.
So, I addressed the drums, and again, I think the drums will be what they are today. As far as the loudspeaker, there's two pieces of that. One, we currently have a loudspeaker that sits on top of the press box. It's the old, I want to call it bullhorn kind of loudspeaker that is aiming right over the marsh. So, it is, as far as Caldwell Farms is concerned, it's the worst possible, because we're shooting the sound right at you. Second to that, the old technology, you hear a lot of the mumbled, and what you, a lot of that noise distortion, or noise pollution, if you will, is actually that mumbled echo. Two improvements that this design brings to the table, one, the sound technology is 2015, not circa a long time ago. So, the clarity of the sound is very different in that you would hear the voice, which will not echo like that distorted sound will. Secondly, I don't have any boards, but the current design calls for, this is a replacement. This is not, we're actually decreasing the number of seats that we have in the stadium currently. We currently have close to 2,000 between the home and the visitor side. We're getting rid of the visitor side and putting everyone on the home side, and we'll have 1,500, 1,512 seats. The scoreboard will be, if you're sitting in the bleachers looking across the marsh towards Caldwell, the scoreboard will be in that corner up against the marsh, facing the bleachers. The sound system that we have specced out to date is embedded in the scoreboard. So, the sound system will be pushing the sound back towards the bleachers, away from Caldwell Farms. Again, we could do sound studies, and we'll never mitigate all the sound, but those two pieces alone, and through looking at designs and specs, will improve the sound at least for Caldwell Farms. Obviously, the people that live in the other direction maybe hear it a little more, they'll be bouncing off the building, I mean, there are things that, you know, aside of spending hundreds of thousands and redesigning berms and landscaping, we're just not going to be able to contain the sound. So, as it goes back to, it's about agreeing sound restrictions and that, you know, making that kind of unofficial curfew of 9:00 PM now, making that the official curfew, and certainly, you know, we're open to having that discussion.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Hold for a second. Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Okay?
John Gibson, 115 Caldwell Farms as well. Is there any need to have those written restrictions incorporated into the referendum questions for the ballots?
I think, off the top, I doubt that, because they're two separate items. This is a land use decision, and what we can do is write them into the land use decision, but it wouldn't be written into the ballot, because that's already been written. Okay? Anybody else want to add to that? Am I right on it?
Yeah, I don't see how it could be on, related to the ballot.
Yeah.
I agree with what you said, they're two entirely separate issues.
Two separate issues. There was someone else calling, let me just, someone else wanted to speak?
Just for clarification, and that is-
Name again.
Marlene Coslow, 36 Caldwell Farm Road. Your plan makes sense in terms of what exists today. Absolutely. The stadium needs to be replaced. I'm all in favor of that. As a former teacher, education is my thing, and I appreciate the effort that has gone into all of this. However, just a reminder that if a rental is allowed, the parameters could change, and future sports and selectmen could decide, well, we could have a different sort of rental.
Carla?
Carla Moss. I'm just wondering if maybe a few of the neighbors could get together with the school and sit down and get some idea of what the schedule is, where, you know, how many nights a week are we going to have the loudspeaker and the drums, and sort of maybe come up with some sort of proposed time schedule, you wouldn't know the teams or whatever, and that could be written into maybe a maintenance, operations and maintenance manual, so that we would sort of have some guidelines, and then if they, if the school wanted to go away from, you know, get into something different than the sports, maybe it would be something that, there would be a hearing if all of a sudden they didn't want to have a rock band, we could have a hearing for it.
Well, that's absolutely, I mean, my sense of how this is going to move forward is that Brian and Triton would need to prepare something that sounds like an operations and maintenance portion of anything that would be incorporated into this document. And that would be primarily Brian sitting down, I think with Martha, and if you, a couple of members from the Caldwell Farm would be part of that, that's fine. We would do that. My instinct is that if Triton ever wants to do something above and beyond athletics, that they would do what, almost any other, any other one intent, they come for a one-day permit.
Right.
And that one-day permit is heard before the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen can deny it or approve it, based on the community's input on it. So, that's the general gist of the way I, but you know what? I need to get how other members of the board feel about that, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. I pretty much totally agree with what Carla suggested. I might want to go a little bit further than appointing representatives. Brian might want to put the word out to, you know, I don't know how you determine who's within earshot and who isn't, but out to your neighborhood, and it's determined in some fashion, and invite everybody in, and then you make the presentation, figure out beforehand pretty much exactly what you want to do. You're going to have this kind of events, you have no intention of doing that kind of event, you'll have a curfew of some sort for anything that is allowed, anything that's likely to be an annoyance, a serious annoyance. I'm not hearing anybody that's having any, anything other than reasonable concern tonight. I haven't heard anybody that's come up with anything that I wouldn't want to have happen. And at that point, maybe you get a working group and then negotiate, and you'll all end up, somebody's going to be, everybody's going to be unhappy, and if you're unhappy and the neighbors are unhappy, it's probably a good, good result.
Thanks, John. Elizabeth?
I agree. I just want to, I appreciate and understand everybody's concerns that have been voiced, but I think people- but I think people also need to remember that this is a school that needs to evolve, and the school needs to have flexibility in order to raise money to sustain the stadium. Otherwise, it's no use to anybody. So, I encourage everybody in reaching, in coming to the table with ideas, that everybody remains flexible.
I agree. I mean, soccer clubs and lacrosse clubs, they're not going to be noisy. You know, kids are yelling, but that's fun, you know? And that's part of building character. It really is. That's what part of athletics and schools are all about, so I would certainly encourage that. There's been a certain noise level with a school for years, which you've lived with, it's been there, so what we're talking about is the excess beyond that. And if a, if somebody wanted to have a drum and bugle competition there, it might be unnerving, but beyond that, you know, things like that, or a rock band, be unnerving. But I think, really, you've had that sound level for the most part there, and it sounds like some improvements are going to be made. So, on that basis, I, I think an O and M plan that's made reasonably for everybody, primarily from you and the school committee, perhaps, with, perhaps in concert with Martha to put it together, with some folks from Caldwell Farm or other neighbors, and come back to us, John, as a part of the, and that should be done fairly quickly, to come back to be made as a part of the decision of this ongoing hearing.
Martha?
Um, no, I agree with that. I also agree with what George has said about doing it quickly. I think it is appropriate to incorporate those kinds of things, the O and M plan, into the decision as a, as one of the conditions of approval. And, you know, basically, for people's concerns that there might be changes in the future once that, once the decision is reached, I mean, that's basically what, what Triton needs to adhere to. And, you know, as John suggests, perhaps there would be a one-day special permit for something, but, you know, that might also require a, a hearing of some sort. But, Brian, do you think it would be possible to, you know, to come up with something fairly quickly so that, you know, we can?
Absolutely. I mean, it's a, it's a school committee decision. I can represent the school committee, but I certainly, certainly can't speak on behalf of them officially.
Right, right.
I think if you and I sit down and you can tell me exactly what you think the, the components of that O and M plan need to have in it, we can certainly very quickly draft up what our intentions are, and I think that, you know, to your point, John, we would be applying for a, for a permit if we had a concert, a rock concert there now. So, that would be something we would be looking to do if we were having a concert.
So, so does that fit, Carla, does that, in other words, let's, let's draft something that you can take a look at?
Right, and I think-
And then, then they'll meet with a group and, and vet it.
Right, and I think what would be important is that when, once you hit six o'clock and you get into the nighttime events, specify how many times in a seven-day period you want to have the loudspeaker on. I know you can't say what days. I mean, it's nice to have a couple of nights in the fall when it's not on.
No, these are good thoughts. I mean, it really sharpens everyone's thinking about how the place is going to be managed. And I, so I think it's great. I will do that.
And I do, I do want you to have a good stadium.
Oh, and I understand that and appreciate that.
May I add something?
Yes.
All of you, anyone in this room can go to a school committee meeting, which might be entertaining at some times, aggravating at others, but you can certainly have input also, and questions will be asked when this issue comes up, so I don't know when the next meeting is.
We're actually meeting next Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Would this be, would this even be involved at that meeting, in advance?
Probably not. We have to have agenda items up by Friday.
Oh, okay.
My guess is this would not be on the agenda.
Would not make it.
It would be on the June agenda. At this point, we, the initial time schedule had us starting breaking ground on June first, but obviously, that has been delayed, and the final approval would be in the fall, with groundbreaking not until the spring. So, it happens in June, that's, that's perfectly acceptable.
Great.
One, one other comment from me. Ed Dearden also expressed some concern about parking during events, if this is going to be rented out to other, is that something you could address?
Uh, yes, and that was actually addressed in the designs through all the engineers and state permitting, whether it be our wastewater treatment plan or any of those, it's about the, the capacity on the campus. And we would never, and this we can say certifiably, we will never rent out the facility when it's in session as a school. So, anytime that we have students on campus, whether it's during the school day, seven forty-two to, to thirteen, or after schools, when the fields are full of athletes, we rent out the facilities in the evening time, or obviously, it would be in the summertime or, you know, Saturdays and Sundays. So, the, I think the largest event we've had, what'd you say, is the Eastern Bay Lacrosse? That's where, that's usually- Non-Triton. Non-Triton, a rental, an outside Eastern Bay Lacrosse group that takes it in June for Saturday and Sunday, and all of their parking is on campus. And there's been other times that folks have rented out Governor's Academy as well as Triton, or vice versa, and done shuttles between. But we would, when we plan for an event and allow the usage, the usage is our facilities. So, if we can't say, you can have the stadium and all of the parking, and you're going to be parked in spaces, not all over the neighborhood, then, then we wouldn't go forward with that plan. So, the parking would absolutely be addressed, and that's, that's actually addressed in the design for all the permitting.
Or, all you folks who came here to speak, et cetera, feeling okay? Robert?
Yes. Robert Gregory. My question is still about zoning. Is there any way that we could ask for an opinion on the zone, on the zoning board?
On?
An opinion, a written opinion-
About what?
About the use that's intended, for rental.
It's, well, it's no different.
It's no different than their current operations in terms of renting out their space.
Income.
Right. So, for, currently, the school, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, the school currently does rent the facilities for other uses that we're talking about.
What do you rent it for?
Fields, gym. Primarily, it's the fields and the gymnasiums.
You do that now?
Have since Triton did.
Yeah. So, it's, it's no different, it's just within, inside the confines of the stadium, so it's no different than what actually currently happens on the current athletic fields, or in the gyms, or for other uses.
So, could we ask for a written statement on the zoning, either it's approved or it's not, with reference to renting it?
Well, it will be in the O and M. It'll, the O and M agreement will, the operations and maintenance agreement will have information in there about what they're doing.
But I think-
It won't, it won't pertain to any specific rental, though.
Right, I think the question is-
Not any one item.
No.
But on rentals.
Right. The question is a larger one of whether, whether rentals are actually allowable.
Correct.
Right. You want a legal opinion on what the school currently is doing and plans to continue to do, is appropriate.
The town official that normally makes zoning calls is the building commissioner, Sam, Sam Drawson. Normally, if you want to build a certain building in a certain spot, if, if you're not in conformance with zoning, he will tell you.
If this is not a building.
Well, it's a, well, first of all, there are buildings, and it is a facility, and he has some jurisdiction there.
So, the answer is, yeah, we can, we'll, we'll do some discussions with our town council, and we can get back to you on that.
Right. I have one other thought. We talk about soccer and other games. On Central Street, there's a huge field.
The town field?
Yeah.
Why are you saying we use that?
Excuse me?
Are you saying we use that, we should use that?
No, I'm seeing, I don't see another need for renting out the fields, your fields.
So, you're saying we should, there shouldn't be a need for us to rent them out?
That's correct.
How does the, so you're talking about the manter fields?
Yes.
And how does that implicate Triton's fields?
Well, like anything, you're going to be looking for income for the use of the field.
Yeah.
We have that huge field that's used every Saturday and Sunday, in some nights.
Yeah.
And I'm not seeing that there is a demand that they would be looking to rent your field. That's a free field, is it not?
No, it's for the citizens of the town, and not for outside organizations.
People who, from all, all over the town, beyond the town.
These will be private clubs.
On Central Street, that field that's there, that's only for the town residents?
Correct.
Correct. It is. There's a sign out there that says it.
Only for residents of the town of Newbury.
Then all of our athletics occur on our fields, because we fill them all the time.
So, all those teams that come from other, other places and use that field should not be there?
They're competing against local teams.
They're competing against local teams.
So, we're hosting.
I understand. All right, just that legal opinion on the zoning.
Sure.
Anyone else would like to say anything? Any board members?
You should probably at least read the names of the people who submitted letters.
Who, who sent?
Yeah.
Do I have them all? I have in front of me, I have four letters. Is that all I've got?
Plus the attachment to Jim Moran's.
I have Jim, Alex, Alexa. I have two Jim Moran's, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Why do I have two Jim Moran's?
It's the same letter.
Oh, oh, okay. And I have two painted horses, is that right? No? So, I might have not everything. I have Jim Moran, Alexa.
Right.
And, and Richard and Paula Piccolo.
And-
And that's all I have.
And Neil Mugarini.
I don't have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's one. Nope. Mugarini?
All right, so I, I am just going to read into the record, not the letters, but the, the people who wrote the letters. From eighty-six Caldwell Farm, Neil and Sally Mugarini. From one-oh-four Elm Street, Jim Moran. Not sure. From Newbury PTA Board Treasurer, Alexis Drouche. And from ninety-two Caldwell Farm, Richard and Paula Piccolo. So, those are the official letters that we've received to date on this, and they'll be put into the record along with all of the comments that were made here by all of you folks. So, I, John?
Oh, I was just going to throw out, maybe since these people took the trouble to write a letter, and the people that spoke tonight took the trouble to come out, maybe when you are sorting out a time and a place for your own organizational thing, give them a personal invitation instead of just broadcasting, because I think we owe it to the people that took the trouble to, you know.
I agree. I'll have to rely on Martha to make sure I have the names, but we'll certainly-
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the names, okay, Brian?
You may have to collect names before you leave tonight, the people that are here.
So, in terms of our next steps, we are continuing this public hearing?
I guess that's the decision, whether the board would-
And also approve whatever the next time. We're meeting on the twenty-seventh of this month. Why don't we ask if that's three weeks from now?
It probably won't happen because anything that we do, that I bring to you formally, has to be agreed by the school committee. That's happening next Wednesday, which the packets will be posted this Friday, so I can tell you that will likely not be an agreed plan for Friday. So, with that being the case, that'll happen over the next month, and it would go to the June, second Wednesday in June, which would be thirteenth.
That actually fits, because our next meeting will be June seventeenth, sixteenth?
It'd be the third, third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday of-
So, we'll, we'll be able to put it on the docket.
So, it, we'll, we'll continue this public hearing to seven fifteen?
Yeah.
Seven fifteen on Tuesday, June-
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Wednesday, June-
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. So, we'll see you in a, roughly a month.
I appreciate it.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for coming.
Does this screw up your schedule on duly, Brian?
Say that again?
Does this screw up your schedule on duly?
If we had been on our original plan, it would have, yes, because we were looking to break ground.
That's the only reason, I, I think they're okay.
No, at this point, we're not breaking ground until next spring, so.
Yeah, okay. Good, good. Thank you, thank you all. Public hearing is over.
Public hearing is over.
Our next issue is, I'll give you all a, two minutes or so to, to leave, for those who don't want to stay for the next public hearing.
Can you pass that down to Richard?
If I had them right behind my head, I'm surprised it weren't.
Well, they were, they were all, I thought, like, guess what?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Here we go. Hey, you ready for this reading?
Yeah, hold, hold for a second.
Hold on. I'm going to wait until everybody quiets. Oh, these are the last ones? Those are extras, I don't know whether you had any or not. Brian?
If I'm allowed to have?
Oh, yeah, you can have them. Have them on your consider.
Excellent. So, these are in addition to what was in your packet? Yeah, it's just that, thirty, and I had nine copies, I don't know. Super. Same thing, just a little, sorry, I'm not really happy to do that. That's fine.
Public hearing for special permit application at forty-eight Old Alley Road, Old Rowley Road, for home-based animal boarding kennel, and the applicant is Lisa Porter. And so, Richard, would you read that notice?
Residents of the town of Newbury, please note that on May, on Wednesday, May sixth, two thousand fifteen, at eight PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at Newbury Town Hall, twenty-five High Road, Newbury, Mass., zero-one-nine-five-one, to consider the application of Lisa Porter, forty-eight Old Rowley Road, Newbury, for approval of a special permit under Newbury's zoning bylaws, paragraph ninety-seven dash three dot M, dot comma, ninety-seven dash ten dot C, dot, and ninety-seven dash eleven dot C, to operate a home-based business consisting of an animal boarding kennel, twenty-four-hour operation. The parcel consists of approximately one-point-one-seven acres of land located at forty-eight Old Rowley Road, assessor's map number R-oh-five, lot number thirty-one, in the residential agricultural district. Copies of the application are on file with the town clerk and with the planning office, twenty-five High Road, Newbury, Mass., and are available for review during regular town hall business hours. For more information, contact the planning office at nine-seven-eight-four-six-five-zero-eight-six-two, extension three-one-two. All persons interested in or wishing to be heard on the proposed special permit application should appear at the time and place designated above. John Weiss, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
Thank you, Richard. So, Lisa, why don't you come up to the microphone and give a verbal, I know you've explained it last time, but if you could reiterate what you plan to do, and, and then we have letters of, of support that have been submitted, and so we'll take a look at those as well. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Porter, and I'm seeking a permit for a small doggy daycare and vacation-type business for my home. You know, the, the word kennel permit is a little misleading for what we run there. It's really a very homey type of an atmosphere, where dogs are brought in, especially to make, you know, a home atmosphere, not a caged kennel-type thing where they would be outside, making a lot of noise. I think that's a general concern for the board. You know, they're, they're kept with us, there are outdoor areas that are fenced for them, but, you know, there's generally one to five dogs during the week, during business hours, you know, nine to five, within that timeframe, that come all the time, and, you know, they would be transported by me, but there would be vacation times that, you know, perhaps there would be up to ten dogs. But we don't, you know, want more than that in the house or on the grounds. We have some nice areas for them. I think a couple of the board members have come by and inspected it. Also, Carol LaRocque has been by to inspect the facilities also, and everyone seems to have found it favorable for what we're looking to do.
Thanks, Lisa. First, I'd get any comments at all from board members on the application, or any questions of Lisa?
I have none.
None, none?
I was just going to say, no cats.
No cats.
And no exotic animals.
And no exotic animals.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
No questions.
No questions. I have a question. I have a question. On your site plan, it shows a play area.
Yes.
Is that fenced?
It is.
Okay. Okay. And did you submit a, like a, an operation? I think it says that the dogs will be in by 7:00 o'clock at night? Is that right?
Ah, yes.
Is that right? Sounds reasonable. You're here, do you want to speak in before or against this?
I think before.
That's my husband. I dragged him along.
Oh, well, get up here. Get up here. I think it's only fair.
He doesn't want them all in the bed.
Fred Hurlbert, 48 Old Rowley Road. It's, like Lisa says, it's certainly a, the kennel is kind of a, I hear kennel, and I think this caged kennel type thing, but they, I can honestly say a good thing and a bad thing, yes, they stay in the house and they do sleep in my bed. So it, and I believe it fills a niche that a lot of people have. They're, either they can't bring them to a kennel because the dog has a special need or it just acts different around other dogs. So I believe it fills that niche that people, you know, want a personal attention for their dogs. And one thing I have found is people will do just about anything for their dogs.
So is this something we can actually approve today and have you write up?
Yeah. Can't vote on a decision today.
Can't vote on it, but we can basically do...
The board could close it, direct me to draft a decision.
A decision.
But then we can't, the board can't actually act on it. I do have a little bit of information here in addition to the letters that were in the packet. Lisa's neighbors, William Burns and Don Delory, have also written a letter of support, and their dog is one of the ones that...
Is there?
That is there, so she actually has...
Tough to fight that one.
She actually has, she has two neighbors, I think.
Yes, two of the neighbors come on a, their dogs come on a daily basis, like 10 to three.
And I was, I went out there today, and I'll say when I got there, everything was extremely quiet. There was some barking when the dogs realized that I was there, but they calmed down. And we looked at the play area, and which is fenced.
Also, you have an approval from Carol, and we have a lot of respect for Carol and what she does for the town, and she has a similar facility, as far as I can tell.
Yes, she does.
That she operates in. And it's in close proximity to a number of, you know, single-family residences. So, I mean, it seems to work out. Of course, they're kind of, you know, animal-loving people, you know?
Yes, our role is...
Am I right?
Yes.
I think that happens. Well, okay.
John, could I just ask one thing?
Yes.
I'm just kind of curious. It's just a matter of curiosity. I mean, I've never really had a dog, but do you ever feel personally threatened by these dogs? I mean, after all, you don't know them all.
I have a screening, I have a screening before they're allowed to come.
I see.
You know, there's a whole bunch of paperwork, and sometimes they don't even get past the phone call. You know, I ask if they're aggressive, you know, if they've ever bitten a person, bitten another dog, you know, what their history is. And then if there's any question at all, they don't even come to my house. I meet them first off property. Because I do work with another woman who does a lot of dog walking for us. And so we have a pretty down pat on screening them because, you know, we bringing them in together, so we have to be sure that everyone's safe and...
I have not felt threatened. I have not felt threatened.
Never.
All right, thank you. So I think that we would close the public hearing and then ask for the board's direction to Martha to draw up a decision that when we can bring forward to the next meeting and vote on it. Is that right, Martha?
Yes.
Okay. So could I get a motion to...
Whatever the issue does say.
To what I just said. Some moved? Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Very good, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa.
So that's good.
I guess a question in drafting this, does the board have any conditions that...
Well, the only thing, the only concern that I had is...
We also...
Yeah. No, the only concern I have is that they have neighbors who are fine right now. But in 15 years, if they're still operating this thing, they could have people move in. Of course, they could say, well, why would you buy the house next to them?
I think that's a very good question to ask.
You could ask me the same question about a high school.
Right.
Yeah, the airport.
But, I mean, it just, that's the only concern that I would have, and I...
John, just as a question, if you don't mind my asking, she mentioned that she had a checklist. Are they going to have an O&M document?
And she's, she's...
I think that's...
I'm just asking the question, do they have an O&M document?
I mean, she included some of that kind of information in the application, hours of operation.
She did. Okay, but how about the checklist? I'm still concerned.
The screening?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, we could certainly ask her to provide that.
In the event that there was a problem?
The only thing that, the only concern I have about that is that, I think, is somewhat of a gut reaction. I mean, it's her discretion to decide whether to take an animal. So you're, two things, you're relying on her judgment, so, you know, I mean, whether she goes through that checklist.
It's not scientific.
It's not scientific.
At all.
So, you know, whether her, it's subjective. So that her, I don't know that that gives, I don't know that that gives the protection that you're looking for in either direction.
But it's something.
I mean, I like the idea is if she's insured, which she said she was, but I think maintaining insurance would be important.
So that that could be a condition?
It could be. I mean, depending on how other board members feel about that. So that, Richard, in case anything ever did happen?
Yes.
That there's some recourse for whether it would be a visitor to the property or in a butter neighbor. But also, I think, having some hours restriction, the O&M pieces into the decision to...
I mean, the fact that she says it'll be, all dogs will be inside by 7:00 is a big deal.
Yeah.
For everybody. And, I mean, almost that's the most important thing, because you don't want to be disturbed in the evening and at night.
Right.
And so that and insurance issues, I think, as soon as I saw that, I kind of got on board, you know?
And I will say that when I went out there this afternoon, I was very impressed. It was totally quiet. You know, there were no dogs hanging outside doing nuisance barking.
Well, she runs the horse facility.
It's all kept up.
It really is, it is.
How many dogs were there when you went out there, Martha?
I think there were five, including...
That's a lot.
Two of her neighbors, her own, and two others.
Carol LaRocque, who's our animal husband or whatever.
Animal control officer.
Control officer. I think has between four and eight dogs at any one time. I mean, she, the reason I say, she's right. Do you know where she is?
I do.
Do you keep your dog there?
The other side...
The reasons I'll share later.
The other side of the coin is that I can start and build a beast farm on my property and have...
Don't do that, John.
Yeah, I mean, I could have ferocious, voracious. I could have all kinds of dangerous critters by right on my property, and so can Shay.
Right, right.
What the hell, it's agricultural, that's what agricultural means. You have animals there.
Right.
We are right to farm, and not that she's farming with these animals, but we are.
But it's, yeah.
Yeah. So I can't get excited about putting restrictions on her.
Yeah.
I mean, there is, there are public nuisance laws, and the town has police power. If it really gets out of control, no matter what we say. If a problem arises, dogs banging at the moon all night long, somebody go do something about that.
Okay. I think we have exhausted our agenda, except for we keep on putting off this report, which is fine with me, and I think fine with everybody who attended the session. Am I right? Unless something pressing you want to say about it?
No. The minute's approval, John. Is there any?
No, we are waiting. No, we don't have them.
To answer a question.
Yeah. So anybody else have anything else for, that we want to consider this evening? If not, we will meet on the 27th and hopefully have this written up and be ready to approve. That day, we will have done a pre-bid conference.
That's right.
With the, with the folks. And hopefully we'll have gotten some response from the community about people who would like to be, participate in the master plan committee, all under the age of 70.
Hopefully.
And so with that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Would you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now that we're adjourned, would it be a good idea?